All right, Claire, we're gonna go ahead and get started. It is 2:03 PM, Monday, October 17th, 2022. And we're just meeting as the Board of Health today. So I, Tim, do you have a? I don't have the agenda filled out, I'm sorry.
Oh. It is on the planner if you want.
Tell me, can you guys have the paper ready fast?
Sure.
Through, you know? Because I just have it up.
It's, yeah, and you have it in your packet, too.
Yeah, wherever I have it. Or three years.
Okay. All right. Colleen, do you want to lead us?
Yeah. Sure. We'll send you all, just see you all the documents.
Thank you.
Yeah, so welcome. So we're here to do a joint public hearing to consider revision to the onsite wastewater treatment system regulations to add OWTS, to add, and OW2STS permit is transferable thereby amending section 1.4a.8 from our 2018 Lake County OW2S regulations. And basically, per some of the conversations we've had around transfer title, we thought that this might be a low-hanging fruit to say, hey, this might be another opportunity for people to, who might have started their septic but then had an opportunity to sell, instead of having a buyer then start the process over. They could, or once the property is sold, the new owner would be able to take on that permit for no additional cost. And so by doing that, you know. So basically, why we wanted to do this because by not doing that, this may, because, you know, this is new to us, too, right? This may inhibit the opportunity for a property owner to sell their property until the repair replacement is complete by allowing the ability to transfer. An OWTS permit, it allows a homeowner more choices when it comes to selling their property. So in the staff report, just if you guys have the whole packet or it was in your packet already, is kind of where we're at. It's really a sick language in the sense of just providing another opportunity. We feel confident that if the motion, and obviously, the in front of the health staff recommends the Board of Health approve the revision, and feel confident that they can have all of the paperwork and the process in place to make it effective as of November 1st of this year. And that is.
Colleen, thank you, Colleen. I'm so sorry.
No.
Can I just, where is the proposed language change?
It is in the staff report.
Because I don't see.
And I just, it would be very impactful, but I just emailed everything to you guys again, just to.
Oh, on the proposed motion? Is that what you're talking about?
Yep. But basically, it goes from an is not to is, if that makes sense. Right now, it is not transferable.
Right, right, right. Sorry, I was not reading that in the format.
So it would just replace those two sentences, right, with what's in your staff report?
So you amended section, we're reading OWTS permit is transferable upon change in property ownership after the OWTS permit has been issued. An order transfer request form must be submitted with supporting documents to LCPHA for review and approval, otherwise, the permit will become invalid.
So you're completely replacing what is existing in eight with?
Yeah.
That language only?
Yes. Okay. Yes.
That means that sort of permit can be decided upon between the buyer and the seller.
And then they have to apply once the seller takes ownership, then showing that they are the owner, then we can transfer that permit, because we can see it's the same property, it's just been moved on or, but, yeah, there wouldn't be additional costs in the sense of the seller, who might have already started the project, would have already paid our permit fee, the engineering fees, like, we wouldn't ask for all new plans and/or, you know, a new permit.
Okay.
Unless they want change.
Right, unless they are like, no, we don't want to do that, because we want, you know, what Kim has brought multiple times in a positive way, but a new buyer is like, I actually want to make this, you know, a six bedroom down the line, so I'm just going to totally remap it. And I'm like, great, well, then we'll close that one out and go start and do one.
That could be discussed before closing, whether they were going to do that.
And then what about the last sentence in the existing term, limited occupancy properties must submit a change of ownership, limited occupancy agreement form that can be obtained from the county public health agency? There's no.
Yes, we removed that because none of us knew what that was.
We don't have a sheet.
We don't have a limited occupancy.
We don't have, yeah.
When we were looking through, like, document, I suggested that we remove that because.
Limited occupancy.
We don't have a limited.
Okay. Great.
I just don't have that thought.
That's great.
Everybody were like, very good to change it all. We all had the conversation of like, I find you anything, and I'm like, even ragging my brain, I'm like, that news do.
Yeah. Do we know what that even refers to?
I don't. I don't, I mean, I think the, I think that it, this document was taken from other places.
Yeah, it might have been a line we missed as we all went through to review it, and no one had pointed it out at the time, because, like I said, we haven't touched this since 2018.
Yeah.
My memory is.
And now that we're bringing it up, I might recommend putting on there that the people have to apply by a certain date, is it just open-ended? I didn't really think about it, but it seems like they should have to, once they take ownership, they should have to apply for that transfer of ownership within 60 days? I don't know, 90 days of taking ownership? Otherwise, unless you're starting to refresh.
I would go like 30 or 60 while it's still sort of like fresh in your mind.
I mean, I would just recommend maybe adding that in there.
And I guess sort of related to that, and sorry, I don't have the full, is it like pretty clear in, in the transfer request form, is it clear what the supporting documents are and, like, do you need to elaborate on that?
Yeah, so I have been looking at Summit County's transfer of ownership document. And step one, complete this form. Number two, are there any proposed changes to the bedroom count? If yes, any subject design is required. Three, attach a copy of proof of ownership, warrant deed, closing papers, et cetera. So it was, so we're going to use that similar structure.
And so like I said, if we have this up and running by November 1st, we'll have all of that, all of those little nuanced details on our website worked out and having a couple of the info. We're kind of, kind of working on behind the scenes to go, then it's like.
On the, on the web, what do you mean, all the details on the website?
So it would, right now, you, the homeowner's guide says that, you know, so the homeowner's guide would change.
Just updating this language, meaning.
Yeah, we would, yes, we would update everything to reflect this change.
We would include that you have two options, you know?
Okay.
And then, and then we would get this form that would be similar to the Summit County's, except it would be Lake County's, and it would just be a region of resources of the transfer of title request form that they have to fill out.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then I do, there is one sentence in here that's just kind of informative, transfer of title inspections are required, this is in the existing number eight, transfer of title inspections are required for all property sales and transfers, see section 1.10 of these regulations. Should probably keep that. Well, because I don't think you.
We have that elsewhere.
Well, if you go in the regulations, under the transfer of title.
Yeah, like that's just duplicated into something that's already in here.
Correct.
Like, we already have everything you have to do for a transfer title in another's, like, a whole nother.
It won't affect it one way or the other if you decide to keep it, so.
True, I understand that. Yes, we actually had that conversation because it is.
Redundant.
Like, see section 1.10, and if you had a 1.10, it has all of that.
Right, I just, yeah, I just wondered if you meant to, if you think it's confusing or think it was helpful to.
I think we just took it out because we thought it was redundant, but if you guys want to keep it.
Yeah, actually, exactly. They are still required.
Right. That's not changed, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, sorry for not looking this over more before, can you remind me? So I think your, your point about having a, a date to submit the paperwork makes a ton of sense to me, and we can decide on what that time is. Is there then also, if there are required, you know, updates or, you know, repairs, is there, is there a clear timeframe that that has to be completed in that the work is being?
That goes into the revision that we requested the last time, because, you know, there is the document that they.
So we don't currently have that, is that what you're asking?
Well, so the current transfer, when the current notarized repair agreement, so when the system has to be repaired or replaced, and whether they, in this situation, whether the owners have started the replacement process or not, and it's not complete yet, the new buyers would have to sign the notarized repair agreement. At the bottom of that, it says that you have to apply within the permit, within 90 days. Or there could be penalties. And the last time, well, in September, we recommend that you might think about putting some teeth into the regulation, because David is not here, but he has been pulling the numbers of, just in the past two years, homes that have gone through the transfer of title process, numbers that have needed repairs or replacements compared to the ones that didn't, and then he's going through and seeing how many have actually started or applied for a permit.
Yeah.
And it's about 50% have not done anything since we issued the transfer of title document. But we'll just keep bringing those numbers to you guys and letting you know.
Okay.
But.
And some of it absolutely falls on us in the sense of, hey, we didn't follow up, and now we're trying to get everything back up to speed.
Yeah.
And, and finding some of these gaps of, oh, okay, that's half of the folks who said we were going to do something, didn't, and now how do we, you know, say, hey, you said you were going to do this, you haven't, you're actually in the system that needed, or they did it and didn't, others, no one did get a permit for it as well, so it's going to take some time to figure out all the little nuanced pieces of some of those.
One thing that's encouraging with this process is that these, these systems that have already, they've already applied, they've already started the process.
Yeah. Yeah.
And so why would you not want to finish your septic system that's half done?
Yeah.
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 Okay.
That's good.
Okay.
I'm good.
Chris, do you have anything to add, or have you seen the revision?
No, I was just pulling up in terms of the review, missing some of what y'all are talking about. I think it's definitely on the right track.
Okay.
And I was gonna say, if there's anything I can do on terms of compliance, once y'all get to this and the folks, you know, I can definitely brainstorm with you about the best way to approach compliance.
Okay.
What, Chris, might be, like, if we were to add this, you know, upon change of property ownership after the OWTS permit has been issued, an owner transfer request form must be submitted with supporting documents within 60, 90 days of the executed, what, of the contract sale agreement?
If you're, if you're talking about, if it's, if it needs to be done before closing, that, then, I was gonna say, if you, that would only, you don't want to use an executed contract, if you will, unless you want something to be done before closing. If it's after they've actually acquired ownership, then I would think it would be within, within whatever period of time you all want of, so, like, one, the purchase of property or the transfer of the property, so that you, you tag it that way versus, you type of a certain number of days from the contract, because all sorts of things come up, and what is likely, and all that, and a lot. Yeah, and it's specifically after ownership.
Yes, and that's what I was going to say, yeah.
Okay.
And then do you want to open?
Um, yeah, so.
The only comment I made, I'm just add to the point that you should think about the timeframe, not extending it too far out, because it, it does have a tendency to fall out, or, or slow, I would think, certain times of year, one thing's to be done more timely than others.
Okay.
I mean, we're going to work with people. If somebody comes and they're like, oh, my gosh, we closed in winter and we totally forgot to apply for the transfer, you know, we would work with them.
Right.
Okay. So we'll open the public hearing today at 2:17 PM and take any public comments at this point. Colleen, did you receive any public comment?
We did not.
Are there any other public comments to need to, on this app, this change in the regulations? I don't see, I don't see anybody else on the.
I'm just listening.
Okay. So with nothing, then we'll close the public hearing and have discussion amongst the board. And, and then vote, so. All board members, all of you.
I'll move to close the public hearing portion of this hearing.
I'll second.
Any further discussion on that?
No, thank you.
Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, discussion and then a motion.
I don't have anything else to discuss, I kind of added some.
Okay.
For a motion.
I guess one thing we should discuss is what we think, in what number of days should we add into the language of what the warmer change I heard, so.
30 days.
I don't have a strong feeling either, right, 30 or 60?
I don't know, Steph, and it seems like fairly simple paperwork, like, you don't have to go get more inspections or whatever, you know, so that 30 sounds pretty reasonable.
After ownership.
I mean, I would give them, I'd give them a little bit longer.
60 days?
Sixty, I'd do 60 days.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
60 days sounds okay. Okay.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion to approve the revision to Lake County's onsite wastewater treatment system regulations, amending section 1.4a.8. You now read, "An OWTS permit is transferable upon a change in property ownership after the OWTS permit has been issued. An owner transfer request form must be submitted with supporting documents to the LCPHA for review and approval within 60 days of the transfer of property." "Transfer of title inspections are required for all property sales and transfers, see section 1.10 of these regulations." And that's the replacement to be effective November 1st, 2022.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Nothing for me.
All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, continuing discussion on transfer of title.
Did you get the? I did, I wrote down the change.
I have it also, if you want.
You don't care, or, yeah, if you want to send it, I just wrote it, but yes, you're the one who sent it, so yeah.
I'll just, I'll just send you what I read.
That's great.
Thanks so much.
Perfect, yeah.
In front of our agenda, just continue discussion on transfer of title and talking about kind of what we've been able to kind of gleaned since we've last met to talk about it. And so I think one thing, obviously, is we're still data gathering right now, and I think, you know, some valuable stuff, just like Kim had mentioned, was the fact that David's going back through our last two years to see how many folks were, you know, were going to do this, the seller was going to, I mean, the buyer was going to take it on, and finding that, you know, it's like, it's 50 at this point.
Yeah, and what we don't know.
We have to go through it.
Unfortunately, when we do this, we issue the transfer of title, and then we don't know if this house sells or not, whether the buyer, you know, we asked them that they send us the notarized repair agreements, but we don't actually know whether that happens or not, and so we're going through and kind of process-wise figuring out, you know, because if it didn't sell, the owner should have done the repairs. So, yeah.
So there's not a process for follow-up?
No.
So that is what we're looking at, seeing how many we missed, like, full ownership, like, what do we need to do? Open first impressions and, and trying to figure that out. I think we'll tighten the loop only because we'll be looking at some of the assessor data to know what actually has sold. So Kimberly and Kelsey Mount with Stephanie, the assessor's office, trying to talk about, like, hey, where can we complement each other and support each other, and you can share what you guys kind of had talked about there.
Yeah, so I think initially, Stephanie thought that those would be reports that we could just pull ourselves, and we tried that out, and it really needs to be her. So she said that that was easy enough. She pulled all the sales for residential homes in the taxing zones that are on septic systems from January of 2022, and we have not been able to go through that data yet.
We just got it.
Yeah, we just got it last week. But, and then from now on, she will be just sending us monthly, it takes her a couple minutes, so it doesn't seem like it's too time-consuming.
Stephanie, you can?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. So we do have the stuff that we need to go through from 2022. And we'll just be processing that, see if we can come up with identifying folks that did not go through the transfer of title process that should have. We spoke a little bit about whether we could have access to the MLS, and she said that we'd go about it, wouldn't be, you know, the assessor's office pays for that service. Kelsey and I are thinking about, Stephanie suggested that you can get the same information off of Zillow, or Realtor.com. So I'm just going to continue, that's just kind of something that I've already been doing. Yeah, it's just kind of trying to be ahead of the game, but I do think that just me doing that through the winter, we're already, you know, have, if Realtors don't know by now, you know. Yeah. I think the more we do that, the less we'll come across that I'm doing.
And I just also like trying to figure out some of those process pieces, like, hey, now we know what property's sold, so we can go back and look, you know, at some of the historical ones that we have on, like, for 2022, like, what happened, what happened. So, from what I'm saying, it's just us tightening up the loop and figuring out where those gaps are, and just seeing what's worth our time to track, what's not worth our time, you know, and bringing you guys all that information on time, and/or putting together in, you know, a document, which we're more than happy to do, to say, hey, this is everything we've gotten to date, let us know if you want a work session, or is it just an email comment, whatever that looks like, you know? Not necessarily like, like, an official board help meeting versus like, hey, we're inputting, you know, to believe you can do as board help, not in, just as an advisory piece, because we have to make language change, and that obviously is exactly what we're hearing, posting, or it's just a process, which I think is a good use of your time as well.
So from us, though, today, what, what exactly would be helpful for you at this point in time on, on the enforcement piece, or what, how far do you want to get into?
I think we, I think we aren't anywhere different than when we're in September, really.
Yeah.
So I think, you know, I don't know if you guys want to set a specific date, or we're going to wait until we have more finite data for you?
Yeah.
With some recommendations as well.
And we have.
And that's a board help, then.
The environmental health team, right now, we're, we're seeing quite a few permit applications and transfer title use permit applications at the end of the season here, so.
Yeah, we are, a little rushed right now.
Yeah.
As snow is predicted, or in the weekend.
Yeah, so we're, you know, the priority, getting those issues, but then once we can get into the data, we'll have more information.
Yeah, I think, like I said, I want that, you know, we've talked about in the past, like, that data driver decisions in the sense of, hey, it's actually not as bad as we thought, because, like, they've only just started with some of it, and like, 50, 50 sounds bad, but we're like, well, that's only like six, all right, that's actually not so bad, it's not like 60, right?
Right.
Looking at the numbers and trying to figure out, like, what's, you know, what would our next steps be in the process and figuring out, like, how that looks. I think the other big thing that we're working on is just the foundation of what in front of the health looks like moving forward, and so I'll have another document that I'll be giving at she's this week, and we say, hey, this is kind of what the team came up with and what we're looking at, and so. And so I'll have another document that I'll be giving you this week, and we say, hey, this is kind of what the team came up with and what we're looking at, and so there's just a lot of little projects going on. As we're working through it all.
Would, I guess I might feel like since the season is upon us, have we gotten the language from Summit County? Or was it language specific, or just like the process in which they go through the inspection for the winter?
I have, yeah, we are working on that.
So I am actively working on that. I, Dan was going to send me some information, but he, he hasn't, he didn't quite send me what I was looking for, so we need to have another discussion. But I have reached out to Dan about the winter inspections, and I've also spoken with, currently, we really only have two inspectors that are Lake County-based and are doing the majority of our inspections. And I reached out to one of the gentlemen that has been doing this for a really long time, and he had some concerns about liability of not doing a complete winter inspection. So I reached, you know, asked Dan about that. I think that they have some language that he hasn't been able to send to me yet about. Deferring some of those aspects to the next season or whatnot? Yeah, yeah. And, you know, as I was talking to Dan about the winter inspections, it just seems like Summit County is maybe a little different than Lake County, where you know, we have our nuances. You know, a lot of our, I think I've mentioned this before, but a lot of our systems, the soil treatment areas are seepage pits. Dan says that they've only seen, like, they only see like two or three of those in a year. A lot of our septic tanks have to be excavated to get down to them.
Like they don't have risers up?
They don't have risers up to the surface. And, you know, some of these have to be, you know, I mean, four, five, six feet down. I don't know. I, in my mind, I'm thinking there might be some way to do some, but then ones that aren't able to be inspected, we could still just use that notarized inspection agreement. And we have to see the capacity of the inspectors to want to do winter inspections. It would be, you know, I think there's a solution, but it could be unfortunate to implement, yeah, you can get your winter inspection done, and then everybody's like, I can't find an inspector to do winter inspections. So I feel like, well, if we want to do that, we'll really need the buy-in from the inspectors that they are willing to do that.
And I think part of that is, you know, our first step's really ours to get all that info, and we do have, to Kim's point, we do have a lot of inspectors who are willing to take a look to see if that will or won't work. So it's not just like, to Kim's point, it's not like a hard no, it's like, hey, this person wants to weigh in on it. Who's one of our two, you know, liable, trusted inspectors in our community to be like, all right, what is your take? Only because they, you know, they do live here and see what they think is realistic or not, and then have that presentation to you guys, as well as like, hey, once we get all this info together, and like I said, that person's more than willing to do that for us, which is great. Actually, we didn't know where, yeah, like, that person was going to come in. We were like, no, we're not there yet. Like, we're still gathering it out. He's like, all right, you know. And so, and that's really nice, is you know, be able to work with a community partner who actually does the work to say, hey, this may or may not work.
Can you, to be a licensed, or to be able to, to do that here as a licensed inspector, can you talk through that process a little bit? I don't know what that looks like, or why we have to.
Yeah, so the National Association of Water Treatment Systems.
Yes.
It's called NOT.
Yeah.
They, they have, it's called NOT Taught Certified, so it's an inspector course, a two-day inspector course that you have to attend to be able to get certified in Lake County and to, to do transfer of title inspections. And they are offered in Colorado through an organization called CPAL, the Colorado Professionals On-Site Wastewater. And they usually offer those courses twice a year. David is attending the next one coming up in November. And you have to, in Lake County, we don't have any other sort of testing for inspectors. We just take their certification from one of those courses, CPAL courses. And so we do ask our inspectors to do that course once a year.
Okay.
Or eight hours of continuing education courses. So there's other courses, a part of NOT certification or CPAL courses that they can take, and they can present us with those certification credits to renew their inspection. There are a couple of NOT Taught Certified inspectors in Chaffee County. Chaffee County doesn't have a transfer of title process, but they have kept up on their inspection, or they've kept up on their certification because Lake County has a transfer of title process, but they most reason, I don't receive too many inspections from them anymore because they're, don't like the Lake County process. Our process is just the national NOT Taught Certified process. So, yeah, I have, like, and then there's a pumper cleaner who used to be certified to do inspections. He still pumps and cleans, but he hasn't wanted to keep up on his certifications. So that's currently, we just got a new one. One of the two is brand new. A local resident that started a new business, and he and his daughter are tag teaming. He's pumping, cleaning, and she's inspecting. And they, so the two inspectors in Lake County are fine with our process and providing us with the information, whereas others are not willing to do that. Did, um, you see, or I think I remember Dan from Summit saying that they asked for, and I apologize, I missed you covering this, like, that letter after that inspection, like, they submit a one-page report to.
The pumper cleaner.
Oh, the pumper cleaner, right, okay.
Yes.
Did we? So it's in our language, our language is identical. To include that, or to get that?
We haven't asked for that, so that is something that we haven't asked for.
We, we are, that's something we're planning on doing this winter. Okay. Is creating a pumper cleaner form, so that it's in our regulation that they submit the form every time. Okay. So we just haven't, it just hasn't been implemented. Okay.
Yeah, actually, we did it this time, we found a lot of things, really.
So we will be, we will be asking for that. I, I know that that will be something that if we try to, the Chaffee folks are already frustrated enough with our policy. But, you know, I'll let them know that they need to be submitting those. Okay. Once we implement it. So it's kind of, I'm hoping to implement that before we start a new season.
Okay.
Kind of, you know, start fresh in the springtime, so that we're getting record of every pumping and cleaning. Because right now, unless it's accompanied with a transfer of title inspection, we're not receiving those reports. Whereas Summit County has said that that's they're able to identify, you know, additional systems that are, have failure and need repairs through those pumping and cleaning inspections. So right now, I think it's just kind of been verbal, like if somebody has their septic system pumped, I've heard, I've heard from folks that they've had their system pumped, and that the pumper just explained to them how to repair their septic system. So I think by, yeah. Well, I mean, that's the conversation, I feel like, how do you reach out to educate or identify those systems that don't have that riser? That could become a problem in the future. You're going to need your inspectors and. One of our employees of. Folks to help, and Realtors to help educate people, and you're like, avoid this problem? Kelsey, when she got hired, Kelsey was like, they had bought a home, you know, within the last three years, and they're like, oh yeah, we just, a husband, pumper, just told them how to repair it and add the risers, and he just added them himself. So I think it would, if we really got those pumpers to start submitting those application, you know, things, and we could contact the owners, let them know that they needed to submit for a riser permit and.
Standardize it, right? I mean, that's like the whole thing, trying to come into.
What does that permit look like? Like to, like, because I was going to say, well, somebody can't just do that, right? No, any repairs or installations, you have to be a licensed installer in Lake County. And so there is a Lake County Licensed Installer Exam. If you wanted to do your own repairs, you could take the test, the state part A and the county part B test, and it costs sixty-one dollars, and you could be licensed to install in Lake County. And that's our additional requirement, right? Like our county, our local.
No, that's state, that's licensed, yeah, the people licensed to do that.
To do repairs and that kind of addition?
Yeah, that's why there's a statewide test. And we just have an additional part B because there's some nuanced pieces of lake. And, you know, it's an open book test. It's, hey, you need your own estate, and you know, wherever you want. Here's state regs and here's, you know, Lake County regs, because they're obviously a little bit different. And, but yes, that is a state.
Can I make a comment? Some of these are tricky, because like, some risers can be literally some risers are six feet deep. And I think that's, and it can be cracked lids. That requires a permit, and it's like.
Yeah, that seems like, like, really.
Right, that's the part, I mean, some of these, and I don't, I'm not, I'm just bitching. I don't have a proposal. But I think that's some of the things, it's like, oh, this could be really easy. And others of these absolutely, you need somebody who really knows what they're doing and how to excavate that appropriately. Because, man, can they do a lot of damage quickly?
Right.
And.
Well, and there's like certain materials that need to be used, you know, and sealing materials and, and the permit, a repair permit's only twenty-five dollars, I guess thirty-six dollars with the eleven dollar skip the paper fee. And it's, we really only have one person. So out of all, if you look at the list of installers in Lake County, we've got lots of installers that install brand-new systems. We have one person who does riser repairs. I mean, as you can imagine, there's not a lot of people wanting to repair, make repairs on used septic systems.
Yes, of course.
So.
I, I think.
But that is a state standard that you have to be licensed to do any sort of repairs or installations.
So for things like, like a cracked lid, though?
Correct.
Is that a state regulation or a local regulation?
That's a state, it's just a state regulation that only someone licensed. The state has their own test, and we offer that test, so a lot of people come from other counties, because we have an online test. And then we send the state the information, the state press part A.
Well, like, if a lid is cracked, would that hold up the transfer of title process? No?
Nothing, no, no, no. This is just who does the repairs or not. And there's lots of supply chain issues on supplies, so that's like sometimes why the minor repairs get held up, but.
Okay.
I mean, it's just like anything, right? If we're, if we're thinking, you know, anyone who does like home repair, and be like, are you a electrician? Like, should there have been inspection if you just did? You know, exactly, like, we just know that people do it. I mean, it just is part of the risk, until something comes up of like, hey, you're selling your house, and now there's something else, or, you know, like, somebody gets a home inspection, be like, oh yeah, I know that, that junction box that like, you know, your husband might have put it in, like, that's not grounded anywhere, like, whatever. You know what I'm saying? Like, it's similar. Let me think of that, like, kind of thing. It's like, really similar. Ours just happens to be specific.
And let's just say there was a cracked lid, and they didn't pull a permit. As long as, you know, and they decided to sell their home, the likelihood, as long as they have not a metal, you know, metal lid, or as long as they've done it correctly and it's watertight.
And inspector says, hey, it's good to go, like, we've no.
You would never know that they didn't replace the lid without a permit. So as long as it's done correctly, I mean, technically.
Right, I mean, it's just like, we are aware of it, and it may happen, but like, to your point, like, until somebody's inspector saying, hey, that's good to go, and even if they did the work, like, we don't, and we're not going back to like, well, they never had a permit for that, and that, we're just like trying to move forward to where they're at with what they have.
Yeah. So what happens when you have a scenario where somebody's purchasing a home? And when the home was built, let's say, in the eighties, seventies, eighties, it was a four-bedroom home. They're purchasing it now, the assessor listed as a six-bedroom home, but their septic tank was only built for a four-person home. How do you, how do you come, how do you find a solution in that with a transfer of title for them? Because that is not.
This is our biggest, this is a big thing.
Yeah, but it's not, I mean, like, it's not the person that currently owns the home that's selling it, purchased it before the transfer of title. They purchased it before there were septic regulations, so it's not necessarily their fault that the person before them did remodel without a building permit. So how do you not inadvertently punish like an owner or a seller in that situation?
I'm going to, yeah, this is pretty much what. I think, you know, what we're finding is, we don't know, right? Like, the first thing that goes into there, and I'll just do one piece, and you can do the rest.
Yeah, okay, that's.
Like, right, the one piece is, hey, get somebody out there, take a look. If an engineer says it's good for a six-bedroom, and an engineer says, well, you might be selling for six, but really it's like a five in this system, it's four, like, we want a professional to tell us whether or not the system currently in place supports the structure and the uses in place. And so that, there is a cost that is incurred then on, you know, the person who's trying to list their house and get it. Like, that's one of the things, like, hey, like, we're not telling you, you can't do X, Y, Z, or it's a full replacement. I'll take an engineer, like, let an engineer, let all of us know what our options are, is kind of the first piece, and then there's a couple other pieces.
Yeah, so, I mean, unfortunately, that's just, that's, it's really unfortunate. But this is what happens a lot in Lake County. Because, and, and just real quick, you said the assessor's office, so the assessor's records and the building and land use records don't really like.
They, they, they more than likely would not match.
Yeah, and, and my conversations with the assessor's office, they don't really care about that girls. Like, it doesn't matter to them.
It would only matter to them for purposes of evaluation.
Yeah, for tax.
For tax purposes, yeah.
Anyhow, so that was kind of, I was like, hey, do you want us to be updating you, you know, things that we find, and they were like, no, we don't really care about that. But what it comes down to is the difference in the OWTS permit from the eighties or whatever, and it's very common. A forty-year-old system, you know, it's going to need to be replaced.
Right.
And another thing that Summit, they gave, provided me with some data, they had an intern, and there's clear systems that are overoccupied fail much more frequently than systems that aren't being overoccupied. So, and when it comes to REG 43, REG 43 is very clear in there on like what size tank for the amount of bedrooms. And then you also add in like the seepage pit component. So a lot of our systems are seepage pits, and so so there's a couple of different scenarios. What happens a lot is, you know, it's on a seepage pit, and the tank is undersized, and they've added bedrooms. And if we can clearly, you know, within the state statute, see that the, the thousand-gallon tank, which is good for two to three bedrooms, doesn't meet the state requirement of, for four bedrooms, it has to be a twelve-hundred-and-fifty-gallon tank. In the transfer of title document, it's very clear that, let's say, this home is being, you know, your system was designed in size for a three-bedroom in nineteen eighty-nine. A thousand-gallon tank does not meet the Colorado standard, so you have to replace your tank. If it's on seepage pits, um, anytime there's a large enough repair, we're put, you know, a tank that's undersized or, you know, a failure and it's on seepage pits, it needs a new soil treatment area too. There have been instances where it's maybe was put in in two thousand ten. And so it's a more modern soil treatment area and it's just the tank size that needs to be, um, upgraded. And then, you know, we would state that, that the, the tank needs to be replaced. And you need an engineer, cause an engineer's gonna have to come out and look at the, you know, how to replace the tank. An engineer would determine if this current soil treatment area, it's large enough, you know, for that. So there's, you know, and then there's, you know, so unfortunately, you know, that it's, you know, we've identified that the system needs to be replaced. And it's kind of better to put it on both the seller and the buyers to negotiate at that time. Because let's say, you know, they, they didn't negotiate and they didn't do any of this stuff, they didn't go through the transfer title process. Then it's opening up the sellers to a litigation of the buyers doing that.
Yeah, so.
I mean, it's kind of like, you can't really go back and, you can't just keep approving something that's not function, you know, not working properly just because.
So like if, if I'm buying a home from Sarah, Sarah purchased it as a four bedroom home, didn't pull a building permit, put in two more bedrooms, like split a living room into two rooms, then I'm buying it. And there's no record that of that getting transferred from a four bedroom to a six bedroom house.
For the system being upgraded.
Or the system being upgraded. And I'm trying to sell it to Jeff. Then would we negotiate, would you say, like an engineer says, okay, this tank is, is okay for the sale to proceed, but it needs to be replaced within three years or whatever? Is there any, any compromise there? Because I have been pulled into situations between the building department and environmental health where it's like, you know, the seller's like, I can't, I'm not going to put thirty thousand dollars into a tank or a system that wasn't disclosed to me as inadequate. Because when I bought the house, it was six bedrooms, but I didn't know that Sarah remodeled it without a building permit. So like, how do you, how do you compromise in those situations to not put me as the seller in a position where I have to put a thirty thousand dollar upgrade in before Jeff can take ownership of the house?
Are there certain lists of disclosures that they should be?
Yeah.
I'm looking at the Realtor.
Can I, can I talk to Realtor?
Yeah, cause we don't, we don't get involved in the negotiations at all.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how we can get out of the middle of.
Some things get tricky in the building department and environmental health because they pulled the permit to put the addition on or whatever. There's a checklist that they did look at the septic system. So at the time they did it, it passed. And now we have a new regulation and it doesn't pass. I've had that situation happen. And so it's like, the standard of what is a bedroom has changed or they have different standards. That's tricky because I, I think the building department requires, it has its own entrance, it has a closet that has an egress window. And that is not, now, like Kim and I talked about this and she said it's an egress window, it doesn't matter if it has a closet or not.
Yeah, and it doesn't in the building department either. I can pull, actually I don't have access to it, you know, but.
And so I think that's one of the things that would really help is if we could get that out there of what is a bedroom, what isn't a bedroom. That, because I, I get it, it's overused on it.
Right.
We've gone over the, so one, part of the not certification process is that they, that counting bedrooms is part of that, um, getting your certification, like learning that process. And so we defer to those, um, inspection reports from the inspectors that, you know, they say how many bedrooms are in the, in the home. And I mean, there's a lot of times, you know, um, you can look on Zillow and it's being sold as a four bedroom, even though the septic permit. So I don't really know that, that our definition of a bedroom, I mean, of course, people don't want their extra bedroom to be counted as a bedroom. But if it's over seventy square feet and has proper egress, um, it is considered a bedroom. And usually the number does match is what they're selling it as. And so, um, you know, as part of Reg forty-three, I mean, that is, um, you know, systems that are being over occupied are more likely to fail. And how would you feel as a buyer if, you know, you didn't negotiate for the cost of the septic system? And then you take it over and you fill all four bedrooms when it was only being occupied by two people prior? You know, cause that's the thing is people are, oh, we're not gonna overuse the system.
But I think you get some of that through the disclosure, right? Like that through the transfer title program.
Well, right, I mean, you get some of that and that's, but I think that to me has been part of the bottom line is what is the definition of a bedroom?
It's, it's, and it's seventy square feet and proper egress.
Right, and so I think, uh, that would be one suggestion is to put it on to the transfer title, what counts as a bedroom. You know, the building department, you know, ten years ago, twenty years, I mean, I've, I've seen so many ten years inspectors. It's just awful and it was like, I don't know that they really cared, even though they were doing environmental health. But I think that would be helpful, um, to just put, because in the end now, environmental health is the one that dictates what is a bedroom. Doesn't matter what the appraiser said or assessor says, that kind of thing. And I think, um, that is gonna be helpful. I think there's a lot of sellers that are trying to be proactive on this. And that's kind of tricky, but, yeah. And then, I, I, that's my hard part. I agree with Kayla is that I've seen houses that it was like, you know, I mean, you could, is this a bedroom, is this not a bedroom? We can't fit a twin bed in it, so how in the world is this a bedroom?
Well, yeah, and I think, I think that's part of it and I think.
So. I don't mean to.
No, it's okay, it's okay.
I'm just trying to, so just this last week, I mean, I, so a lot of homes, I mean, I'm, you know, the moratorium on short-term rentals right now, it's kind of put this to a halt, but there comes this like, you know, people wanna sell their home with the most amount of bedrooms in it. And people want, when they see they're buying a four bedroom home, they think that they can fill it with eight people. Well, then they get their transfer of title document and then it really upsets. You know, then the homeowner's like, well, no, what constitutes as a bedroom? And then when the buyers, you know, realize that they, you know, the septic permits only for three bedrooms and community planning and development will only issue them a short-term rental license for three bedrooms. You know, so it's, some people want the extra bedroom, some people don't want the extra bedroom always. And a, and a lot of these, a lot of these systems are so old. So we recently, just this last week, I issued, um, so the system, um, was undocumented, unpermitted. Um, it was put in sometime in like eighty-one or something like that. Um, there, so it was undocumented, unpermitted. There was a repair permit adding an additional seepage pit in ninety-one, which said that it was system designed for three bedrooms. So that was the only permit, we never, there wasn't an original permit. So it has two seepage pits and, um, essentially it would like the, it was kind of homemade. So one of the risers was this like six foot metal riser, which metal is not allowed. The other riser was made with wood railroad ties, which wood railroad ties is not allowed. And so it was like, and, and there was no.
But that's impressive, that's impressive to me, it's, so word to that.
She would climb down it.
There was, um, once the, the pumper, they had pumped it all and they found a pickaxe in the tank and a lid down there and that stuff can't be retrieved. No one can get into a septic tank because of the toxins. You're not gonna give anyone to retrieve that. Then, um, the seepage pits, it had two seepage pits, so you're supposed to have a diverter valve. A diverter valve, a lot of homeowners don't realize this, that you're supposed to have a diverter valve to switch, you know, the excellent going into one field for a little while, give the other one a rest and you switch it. Well, this one never had a diverter valve. So in forty some years, it hasn't been functioning as designed.
With your like diverting tubes and stuff.
And, yeah, yeah, so it's always been functioning inappropriately. And, and so really this whole system, you know, it's like, do we, you know, allow the risers to be, the excavation of the risers? And I mean, you could spend tens of thousands of dollars doing all of these repairs. The diverter valve seemed like a large, because it hasn't ever been functioning properly in its seepage pits. That, you know, you, you allow them to repair all of these things and spend tens of thousands of dollars and still their system is undersized for four bedrooms? Or do you just require that they upgrade their system to accommodate the fourth bedroom? So a lot of times it's not just, you know, it's not just, you know, this is a great system. You know, what we're finding is that these systems are really old on seepage pits, need to be replaced. This is the best time for them to negotiate, um, you know, the cost of the system.
Yeah.
Fortunately, it's, there's not much we can do about the people that bought their home from someone else who did things and didn't upgrade the system.
Can I also make, right now, I mean, we're coming off of record high prices. So we had sellers who had equity in their house, but this is gonna become a problem. Where we're gonna get into people who don't have equity in their house and can't sell, get into a big problem. Then we have a whole, you know, we could have a lot of foreclosure issues that we get stuck with this stuff. And so I think it's something is to figure out some funding mechanism, at least to do a loan on it. I mean, God, I don't wanna go back to two thousand ten, but, um, and I don't know. I, DOLA used to have something like that for people that was of low interest to put on roofs, to put on, change electrical services, stuff like that. And I think we gotta start right now if we have this money is at least create some kind of a pool. Because some of that is gonna happen.
To, to sort of get through closing without having to like take another loan out or something.
Or take a loan, get through closing, close on the property and then it gets.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. Without interfering with the.
The closing, yeah.
Yeah.
Boulder County, I've done some research, you might, they have a assistance program. You might be able to find out more information about that.
Okay. Okay.
And it's also trying to figure out, and I apologize if this repeated, I apologize if I step out where, you know, because it has been record prices, like anyone is making money on their home. You know, in the sense if they bought it twenty years ago and their mortgage is paid off. Versus i- in the sense of, is it better to, you know, lower the price for this? So that the buyer can, so that the seller can sell it for maybe forty thousand dollars less? So that the buyer then already was planning on paying that forty thousand into the house can actually put it into the system. Like I know that cuts into a lot of other, um, I know that's a little hard because that cuts into a lot of bottom lines, a lot of folks, but it is your opportunity for that as well.
Well, but some of that, and let me bring, some of that is, it's, like, just because you have a whole lot of equity in your house does not mean that you can relax that until closing. And for the buyer, you're getting a loan, but, I mean, I have called so many vendors and asked them, will you loan on the property that does, that has a full septic system? And that's why, you know, you know, this interim type funding. But, you know, part of that is somebody has equity in their house, yes, they're gonna have, they get paid off at closing. You're gonna have those hard for people that.
Yeah, I know.
Right, and that's gonna be, especially as so many people are struggling to get into horrible housing. And so it's just, I think it's something that we have to really look at. And, um, yeah, some of us, we have a, we have some legacies in a whole lot of seepage pits.
Legacies.
Driven by, um, certain inspectors.
Yeah, assuming we don't get defaults now, what do you think you would need in, in a revolving fund like that? I mean, if it's like twenty to thirty to repair.
No, I'm thinking like three hundred.
But, but like how many, yeah, so like three hundred, so we could hand, I mean, wow, kind of like six or eight at a time?
Does the code give things like that?
Well, they used to.
Just right now, there's nothing that we're, like, we have, we reach up to state.
Yeah, that may have, that may have been eliminated, but.
I feel like so many of those things, when systems were going in, right, when the regs were coming out, it's like, great, let's get it. But you know, people weren't like, I wanna fix my system now, you know, like. It's, you know, it's just something people don't think about until they have to.
Yeah.
It just is, I mean, that's, I would be in that same boat, I don't.
How many new septic systems are playing in the city really?
That could really be a question.
Yeah, David, and I mean, I can pull monthly, but I don't know.
Well, and, and.
I'm just curious about like.
Are you talking about like new builds or?
No, I doubt that.
No, or, um.
Replacement, replacement of listings.
Replacement has gone to the top. I can't actually, he just, so, yeah, he just did that. So two thousand, two thousand twenty-one, we did twenty-five that required repairs or replacements or a, a minor repair. But I think that there was only a handful of those. And David said that out of the twenty-five, twelve had applied for permits and thirteen had not. And then so far in two thousand twenty-two, we've done twenty-one tots that required repair replacement. And he has received ten application permits. So there's eleven that went through the top process this year that have not, that required a repair that have not submitted for a permit. So twenty-five last year, twenty-two this year have been identified. And I don't know the numbers breaking down, how many were just like a riser repair? Majority of them were actual like.
Full repair?
Yeah, either, yeah.
Full replacement.
Or full replacement, okay.
Well, you know, some of, you know, some might have just been like, like the tank size was okay and you just needed to, you know, whatever.
Okay. Okay. So that's something that we need to.
So yeah, so twenty-five last year, twenty-two, so, or twenty-one so far this year.
Okay.
And Summit County has sent me a bunch of different graphs, you know, they've been doing this for twelve years. They have seen a dramatic, you know, the systems are really being replaced and they see fewer and fewer failures every year. I mean, we're just kind of in infancy and so we're gonna be identifying a lot of problem systems.
And I can, I can give you all the numbers comparing all the years and how many, you know, permits have come through, how many new builds, how many all of that, like repair, all of that tots, et cetera.
I don't know, that's a huge deal. I think it's just to answer your question.
Very like, we look exponentially from the last couple of years, right? I mean, you've seen the progress forward, everything's like, what do you want? You know, everything just keeps lining up.
Thirty-five to fifty thousand.
For full replacement, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm gonna say, I mean, you know.
And her that's gone up too because of the flags.
Well, well.
And we have our money, like, I mean, you dedicate that, you don't have to get state money for it, we could use our own money and dedicate that into a revolving fund. And again, as soon as, as long as you don't get too many defaults, I don't know, just.
Yeah, I'm curious whether the county would be there.
Again, it was like, it was like a hundred K versus like seven hundred K that needs to be in the fund, that's a big difference.
Or the housing authority, which, which could hold an account that could accrue any interest to make any money possibly. How do you get the lien on the property, should it default?
Um. Sorry.
See, I'm, I'm sorry, I have to get a couple of phone calls returned before.
Yeah, I don't have any other questions for you guys.
Yeah, I have all of them, I'm just trying to find them.
Oh, I do remember, so some of the people, you know, this whole now, a lot of people have, they don't wanna put the money out, you know, cause they're, they're not comfortable putting up forty thousand dollars, they don't. You know, cause they're, they're not comfortable putting up forty thousand dollars, they don't know how much it's gonna cost. A lot of people, you know, wanted to start the process, and because I, I think if they, they feel like they'll save money, if they go ahead and, you know, get the exact numbers. And, um, uh, you know, here, uh. We have heard from some of those people that have done the replacements themselves before selling the home, that there, have been replacing systems around twenty to thirty thousand dollars.
Okay.
So, and you definitely wouldn't, if somebody, the buyer wanted to add a larger septic system than the number of bedrooms in the home. You would not be wanting to fund the money, extra money for that, cause that's just gonna increase their property value.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, Mabel and Claire, we're gonna, we're gonna wrap up, so I'm gonna close the Zoom out, um, we'll wrap up today at three-ten.
Yep.
Thank you.
So, thanks, guys.
Thanks.
I'm not trying to push you on this.
No, I, I mean, it's a complicated.
It's very complicated.